Thing that was a huge thing like 12 to 13 years ago. And I thought I was getting really good at it. And one time I tried to do something that I shouldn't do. Now, normally, my friend's father, who was always taking us around to do these things, was around every time he thought we were going to do something stupid. He'd say, oh, yeah, sure, I'll just get ready to call the ambulance. That was his way of saying, hey, you shouldn't do that. And we needed that. But one time we didn't need a ride because it was just in Fitchburg. We were going to St. Bernards. They had these railings that were just like made of marble or stone or something. And I decided that it would be a good idea for me to stand at the top of one of these railings and try to do a backflip and land on the bottom of the railing. Basically, a platform about this size to another platform about that size, three feet lower. If there was an adult in the room to tell me not to do that, I wouldn't have gotten the injury to my leg that I got from doing that. But because there wasn't an adult to tell me, hey, you shouldn't do that, I went and did it. And I scraped my leg so bad you could see the tissue coming out. Okay, and I'll just say, there would have been students here to say the other way if we've created an environment where they were comfortable to do so.
All right, thank you.
Hi there, my name is Patrick Sargent. I live over on Central Street in Leominster. I'm the, I run a local business. We've talked before, and I told you that I was going to get some data. So I got some data. The data is, the data is vast majority of people who I've talked to in Leominster, locals, they not only would agree with this policy, they go past it, okay? The fact is, and I know that Title IX is not the scope of what we're talking about. I understand that. But I've talked to plenty of fathers and mothers who have kids in the school system, daughters, granddaughters. If we had this discussion downtown Leominster, I would absolutely be in the majority. I'm just, I'm going to be frank with you. So, and this is a voting issue for a lot of people. Now, here's, here's the thing. We've talked, we've heard about track. And I know you said yourself, actually, you were the first woman on the, on the track team. I remember from a few weeks ago. And here's the thing, I'm not here because I have a daughter in the school system. I'm here just to show you. This is about 75% plus so far. I've collected a stack about 20 people who I've talked to. And I can count on one hand that's not in this 20, about three or four of them that we're not really sure, they might think it's okay. One person so far, absolutely not. There should, there should certainly be no, it would be unsportsmanlike for a female to play against a male. We've given you statistical data, medicaljournals.edu.gov. Here's the thing, there's, there's no reason, no rational reason that doesn't go outside of the scope of ideology to not support this policy. If you're, and I know Dean as well, Mayor, you were asking about hypothetical in terms of loopholes. It's simple. If there's a male on a female team that we're playing against, hypothetical Marlboro, no, if there's no females on that team, excuse me, and there's no, and there's no females and no males on their team and no males on our team, there shouldn't be a reason to, you know, to, to have to cancel. So here's the thing, disorder does not come from order. Okay, ultimately, I believe in Jesus Christ. That's the fact. I'm not here because I have a dog in the school system. We are created, we're going to make a decision at the end of our lives. Did we make the right decision with what we were given? Me too. If you trust that he died for your sins on the cross, you're going to go to heaven. But here's the thing, we're still held accountable for what we say and do. He has given you all, whether you believe it or not, I know you may not believe, I understand. But he has given you an opportunity to stand for order or disorder. And believe it or not, I care about every single one of you. And I also care about the male who believes that she's, that he's a female, that she's a female. Okay, I believe that God loves them because he created them. So I'm not here to hate at all. I want to make sure that's clear. I know my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the committee?
Sorry.
Okay.
My name is Teresa Barcelona. I live on Bridle Cross Road in Leominster. I've reached out to several of you individually, speaking against this proposed athletic policy. I'm going to read because I don't like speaking in front of groups. I think that this policy would be overreaching, allowing for discrimination against both male and female players. At its core, sexist, making it seem like a single male player would destroy an entirely female team just because he is male. Further, it would allow male athletes and teams to refuse to play female athletes. I personally was one of a handful of female wrestlers in Connecticut in the late 90s. And I can tell you that winning because a male wrestler forfeited, rather than compete against me, was not how I wanted to win. The driving incident that seems to be behind this proposal is when a female field hockey player was injured by a male player in 2023. This incident occurred during a defensive penalty corner. And inside the penalty circle is where 50% of field hockey injuries in international tournament play occur. The female athlete wasn't wearing a corner mask, which was recommended in this situation, but not required. If the goal here is to protect student athletes, then I think we should be talking about protective gear instead of proposing sexist amendments. Finally, I wanted to thank the female student athletes who came and spoke out. That must have been challenging for them. And I think it's fantastic that they were speaking out against this as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No. Anyone else like to address the committee? Once again, one last time. Okay, thank you. Public forum is closed, and this item will be brought up in the agenda later on this evening. Communications?
No communications at this time.
Student report, don't have student reports? Wait, I wanted to see if she could figure it out. And it wouldn't feel so bad that I could never figure it out.
Okay, so for, on the LHS side of things, the Seal of Bileiteracy test is done. We had 37 kids who did in 10 different languages. We won't have the results until February vacation. But in the meantime, Ignition Show Choir completed their competition on Saturday. They earned silver and judges award them for their most theatrical costumes. The best performer awards were for Alex Rodriguez. Also, three of our wrestling members got 100 career wins. So this was Antoine Lennadiego, Troy and Danny Green. Theater is currently working on their festival play. And since the, you know, fire that happened a while back, we've since regained access to the auditorium, which is good. Black Heritage Club will have their gala on Wednesday on the 6th. So I encourage everyone to go. Class 2026 wrapped up one of their fundraisers recently. Next Week Chorus is going to have a concert at the school. Maggie Layden and Noah Gray were also recognized as presidential scholars and are now eligible to complete on a federal level. And their two scholars are the 25 that are selected by the commissioner on the entire state level. And finally, students were awarded the Abigail Adams Scholarship on the 23rd. So that was 119 students at LHS, which is a huge accomplishment. Also, one final thing, students, please order your overdue caps and gowns. We have less than 50% of our seniors who have ordered them. And there is a late fee. If you are a parent, please remind your kids.
And at CTI, they completed their three school recruitment visits at West Boston, Sammaset and Skyview.
How much is the late fee? I just figured maybe it isn't high enough. This is like, what is it, congestion pricing in New York City?
Yeah, everybody.
I've been a victim. All right, thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you. I need to take out some of my items because Ren has already reported on them, so thank you. First, I just want to thank the DPW, our Facilities Department, school custodians, and everybody who helps with the clearing of snow on snow days or snowy days. We've dealt with a few early morning storms, and it really takes everyone to get our schools ready. So I'm grateful for all the efforts and collaborative efforts that everybody has taken to ready our schools in the morning to receive our students. Equity Working Group continues to work on the visioning and planning for developing a welcoming-for-all-students Leominster. And we're asking for families who have not completed the Equity Survey to do so. It is on our Facebook page in my newsletter, so you can find the links there. January 24th, we have entered the third marking term. So this is a great opportunity for students to reset and gear up and focus and do their very best this third quarter. Winter sports season started officially in December. We have some great events happening daily. So if you're interested, please go to our athletics website and look to see what's available that you can go and watch. We've had a lot of great competitions happening through the month of January, and they're going to continue through February. There's an early release scheduled for next Wednesday, so families are aware of that. Please, if you have some changes in transportation or who's picking up your children, please reach out to your schools directly. This is a great opportunity for our teachers to spend some valuable time in professional development around utilizing our curriculum materials and looking at student data to be able to create interventions. MCAS testing is coming up in March. Just want to remind families that we still do MCAS testing, grades three to 10. It's a mandated federal and state assessment that has to occur. I know recently a vote took place to not have MCAS be a requirement for a diploma when graduating, but it is still a requirement for us to assess students so that we have valuable information around student needs and are able to create academic supports for our students. February break is coming up, the week of February 17th. And finally, mark your calendars. We have a delightful evening, Wednesday, February 12th, where our talented students will be taking the stage at an all-city chorus performance at Leominster High School.
12th? Cool.
The 12th. And that will be at 6:00 PM. And it will be a wonderful showcase of all the musical talents of our students across the city. And that is it.
Right now? Before I lost out, forget. What is it, all, all city?
All city chorus.
All right, thank you. And next is executive session. Is this going to be long? I'd hate to make everybody wait here and then...
Did you want to? Sure.
Mark, how long did you think?
All right, so...
Took me that long to get the microphone?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session under Chapter 39 to discuss contract negotiations, and we will be returning.
Okay, this will be a voice vote, starting with Mr. Holt?
Yay.
You can stay, we're going to leave. All my friends are leaving, can you stay? Don't leave, we're going to step out to that side room. All right, go ahead, leave.
All right, leave.
No, come back.
Now, everybody should leave at this point.
No, please don't.
What was the name we're on?
We're going on a Sandy.
Sandy.
Yay or nay?
Yay or nay. Josh?
Yay.
Yay?
Yay.
Yay.
All right, we will be returning.
Well, I just, they might not know who he is.
We lost our audience.
Yeah, they'll come back.
Yeah, don't worry.
I hope you did. All this important thing, so tearing down one, building new one, tearing down the other. Come on up, make yourself comfortable. Craig, you want to introduce yourselves?
Absolutely. Mayor Mazzarella and members of the school committee, thank you for having us. My name is Craig DeCarlo. I'm with Left Field. We're the owners' project manager for the Fallbrook Project. I'm joined with Nareda Rodriguez.
Hi, my name is Nareda Rodriguez. I am the principal and middle dyer Spears. And we're the architects for the Fallbrook Elementary Project.
And so we're here tonight just to give you a real quick, we were told very quick, preview for update on what is going on with the project. So Chris, are you controlling the slides? Oh, Kyle.
Kyle doesn't exist.
Okay, all right.
Like, it's like...
Perfect, thank you, thank you. All right, Stephen, next slide, please.
Doesn't exist. He's the cloud, he's in the cloud.
All right, so we're going to quickly talk briefly about the MSBA process. We'll show you the project schedule. Nareda will give you a design update. We'll talk very briefly about cost, community outreach. And then if the chair would like, we can do questions. Next slide, please. So the next one's a really cool infographic. There we go. So this just shows the relationships of the parties on the project. So the MSBA and the district are partnering up to fund the project. And then the district, being the city and school, hire the OPM, hire the design team. And then next, about a year from now, we'll hire a general contractor through a low bidding process. Next slide, please. So the MSBA process is broken up into nine modules or like steps. Right now, we're in module four, which is schematic design. Modules three through six are the design phase. So you can see we're kind of like halfway through the design phase. At the end of this month, we're going to be making a major submission to the MSBA. It's the schematic design submission. And then April 30th, the Board of Directors will be voting on the project and hopefully giving us approval to move forward, which we anticipate will be the case. Next slide, please. So we're on the schedule, we're that little red arrow at the beginning of 2025. You can see we're in design. That'll wrap up in the fall of 2026. Then we'll move into construction. We anticipate the construction of the new school building will go through fall of 2028. At that point, once the students are moved over, we'll open the new school, demo the old building, fix up the site, and then we'll be all done sort of by, let's say, summer of 2029. Next slide, please.
All right, so we have been designing since last year. This is a schematic site plan where you can see, it might be difficult for you to see, but the building will be north of the existing bill, of the existing school. The, the new school, once it's demolished, will have the parking lots and will be having a parking lot for the buses separate from the school. And we're trying to keep all of that traffic off of the Tichico Drive. The building is oriented north, east, west, so that we can gain as much daylight from north and south. And the majority of the publicly, public spaces are facing, are on the main entrance and can be closed off so that they can be used after hours. Next slide. This is a first floor plan. So the arrow is the main entrance. To the left is the administrative suite. And then to the right will be the gymnasium. Right to, across the way from the main office is the cafeteria, which it'd be very similar to what you have now, but improved. And then we have a lot of the, in the middle between, the, the blue color spaces are much of the general classrooms. And the special education classrooms are in that pink color. In the middle between the public spaces and the classrooms are the specials, such as OTP, TPT, art, music. And then upstairs, in the next slide, please, we have STEM and the library also in that middle space. And the idea for that, the concept for that is to have the majority of the spaces that all the students use in the middle of the school. So it's less traffic, less steps to get there for each of the students. Next slide. So these are some preliminary images that we've started to develop with the building committee and the public's assistants. So here we have on the, what you see is the lobby of the school, where the glass to your left is the main office, looking towards the lobby where students can be seen and enter the main office for any activities. We're looking at towards the back is the entrance to the cafeteria. And then those two sets of double doors are leading to the general classrooms. Next slide. This is a view of what the cafeteria might look like in the future. So where we have, we're looking towards the stage. We're look, and to the left is an open courtyard. And to the right is a corridor with the main office. Next slide, please. Then we're moving upstairs. There is a main stair between the first and second floor, wide enough to have a lot of the students move about. And then towards the back of this view is looking towards the library. Again, having some open areas that are, do have some potential to have some film on it to prevent people from looking at the students while they're working, but still provide some ability to have some light from the exterior into the interior spaces. Next slide. And then this is a view looking at the library, where again, a double height space to gain some of that north light, the teaching space being away from the glass to avoid any kind of disturbance from the traffic in the corridors, and then a connection to the STEM room from the library. Next slide. We also been looking at the exterior of the building. So looking at how a school that's about 30% larger than the existing school still feel a smaller, small, you know, it's a two-story building, as we talked about, but it's still trying to have gabled roofs and sort of breaking down the, this, the volume of the spaces into smaller and more accessible spaces. We'll have a canopy in front of the building to support the teachers who are out there every day, sort of allowing, helping the students get to the buses and the cars. Next slide. This is a close-up of that main entrance with the canopy and the offices for the, the main office and the principal's office are going to be to your left and the gym to your right. Next slide. And this is just a front view of the building as you might see it when you're coming from the parking lot. I just want to sort of briefly talk about sustainable goals. We've been talking about this with our, with our team and the building committee, sort of looking at not only sort of what kind of materials, the type of mechanical systems and how, and the air quality of the building, but also to, to celebrate and protect Fallbrook and its beauty that's on the existing building, that's really important for us, and, and bringing that beauty into the building. So there's a nice connection between the outdoors and the indoors. We're going to be looking at reducing energy consumption and the use of toxic, toxic materials.
And then a quick look at costs. So we do not have dollars and cents yet, but this is a graphic showing that the MSBA is going to contribute a significant portion of the overall cost. There are some small outside funding opportunities that the project may be eligible for. And the district will be paying the majority of the cost. Next slide, please. But we're going, the team is going to endeavor to maximize how much the state is paying and minimize how much the community is paying, of course. Everything in our power. So we've had a pair of public meetings, and then one more coming up in March. At this March 1, we'll have the estimated construction cost. We'll have the estimated total project cost, that big pie that we were just showing you. And then we'll have the city's funding strategy. Then after that April MSBA meeting, we'll have a Board of Directors meetings. We'll have the MSBA's maximum grant amount. That's sort of what everyone wants to know. And then thus we'll know the city, the cities share as well. Next slide. Community outreach, we have a project website that's updated continually. Last year, we had some visioning sessions led by the design team to engage the school and the students and the parents. And then this year, we've had a handful of public meetings. Next one is March 18th. Put it on your calendars, we'd love to see you there. Next slide.
Craig, I just want to explain, one of the parents at the meeting last time asked the question. I thought it was a good question, you know, why are we building a new school? And so we didn't pick that option. We go to the state and say, you know, this building is 60 years old, and we need to spend some money. How best should we spend it? And they make us do a feasibility study and look at it. And they could say, school's fine, doubtfully. School's fine, it needs some upgrades, mechanicals. They could say it needs a renovation addition, like this building. We had a small, we had an addition and renovation. Or they could say, you need a new building. Everything else is just wasting money. We make our case to them, they actually choose which one. We have to make our presentation to them. They actually vote on which option it's going to be. They decided none of those other options are viable. We do all the work, but we present it, so...
Pretty much. So the, that feasibility study is the key that you pointed out. And that is a big effort to look at the existing conditions, the enrollment projection, what, what your educational program is. And then the building is supposed to support that. And so the design team studies, just as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, repair only, add, reno, new construction, various configurations. They all get a price tag associated with them. We look at the pros and cons. And as the mayor was saying, all that gets presented to the building committee. Building committee prefers one, right? So that we have a preferred solution that we put forth. And then the MSBA, you're exactly right, Mr. Mayor. The MSBA approved, basically agrees or doesn't agree. And they agreed with us at that preferred schematic report level. And so then that narrowed down all the options down to a single option, which is the one that the design team's been developing over the last six months? Five months, something like that?
Five years, it seems like.
I know, it feels like a long time, but it is, it's a linear process. And that's, is linear and thorough.
Melissa?
So the classrooms themselves are about 100 or 130 square feet larger than the current classrooms are in, in Fallbrook. The number of classrooms are being, are based on not only the number of students that you have now, but also on the approved MSBA population that was approved back in 2021 or 2020. And there is some flexibility in that there are some classroom sizes that are smaller, you know, that can be used for, for variety of uses. But the number of classrooms within that are, have been like, like Craig said, the MSBA has to approve the number of classrooms. If you, if you want to increase the number of classrooms based on that approval number, let's say you say, oh, I really need five more classrooms that, for the flexibility in the future. Those would have to be paid by the city alone. Like the MSBA would not allow us to go beyond the number of classrooms that are already approved. So this, the school will be solar-ready and also EV-ready. That's required now with the new energy code.
Good question. It's only one road, right?
So we can only speak for our project, the Fallbrook Project. But yes, in the design documents, which set the rules of the road for the contractor, we're going to ensure that Tichico Drive is maintained so that students can get up to Sammaset, parents can get up to Sammaset. There will be some pinch points, there will be some periods of a little discomfort, we'll say. But we are going to direct... But we are going to direct the contractor to ensure that business can proceed, education can proceed at Sammaset. And I'm not sure what the other project is, but same thing, that you've, that you've get free movement. Got it. Yep.
Yeah.
So the second floor is all connected and the building will be fully accessible. There is an elevator in the center of the school, which is within proximity of the main stair.
Will inflation be included in the construction cost?
Absolutely.
What are you talking?
It's going to be different than a year from now.
You're absolutely right. So we actually, what we have going on tomorrow is we have our schematic design cost estimate reconciliation. We've got these two cost estimators who have independently developed cost estimates. We're going to come together tomorrow and compare notes and get them reconciled. And part of that is each of them have taken their best, I'll say guess, best guess at what the future holds. And they, we call that escalation. And so each of them have a very healthy escalation number. And we're going to talk about that, make sure that, that the district feels comfortable with what we're putting in there. But yes, there is a factor, a healthy factor in there for our escalation.
Thank you.
What's going in order here?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see, Greg. I didn't see you handle.
No, that's okay. I have very important questions. One, is the Sammaset sledding hill going to be gone as a result of this? Oh, unfortunate. Okay, the more important question was, what was kind of the thought process about putting the cafeteria and the gymnasium right at the main entrance? Is there concerns about congestion or anything in that? Just feel like it's chaos. By putting those things right there.
We had a lot of different options that were studied as part of the, of the process early on in the feasibility phase. One of the thoughts was, as I mentioned, having those public areas within proximity of the main entrance so that they can also be closed off so, and be used for the community at large, off hours.
Skyview is the same way.
Uh, right.
Cafeteria right there? Oh, okay.
And we talked about how many, how many people will have to use the corridors. That's why we made, we made them extra wide. We also made the stairwell wider than the normal stairs so that you can have the students not interrupt each other as they're moving between specials.
Thank you.
Ron, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, you know, yeah, I don't know why it's not working. It's getting on my brain. Hello? Can you hear me now? Does it work now? Sound tremendous. All right. When I looked at these, at the designs, oh, last week, there's something that I missed, I guess, on the, the main lobby. You can hear me, right? Yes. The one on the interior design, the main lobby, it's, it's brown wood almost. You know, you've got the lighting there. And then in the back, going in the, there's like a little doorway going out. There's some lighting over there. And on the interior design and the cafeteria, there's lighting, but there's no, it does, I don't know if there's any lighting on top, you know, in top of the ceiling. But on the other hand, the main stair, looking at the library and STEM room, it's very well lit. Are you, is there, is there, is there, is there any planning to put any, any, any more lights?
Yes. So I should have mentioned, these are very preliminary. We didn't add color to any of these renderings yet because we still are very early in the process, schematic design. We haven't selected the materials or reviewed the finishes yet with the team. That's going to happen later in design development. And you're probably right, we, in the renderings, you probably don't have enough lights or have, you know, but those are in the, those are preliminary. We do have, in the cost estimate, what happens at this stage is usually the lighting, for instance, is the cost per square foot. They don't count every fixture. But you're right, there is some more work to be done there. You know, this is just a, to sort of get you a sense of what the space might look like, but not necessarily what all the elements.
Like over here, where you had these pictures of the cafeteria, you know, you've got these things that are held up. So are you saying there's planning to putting some lighting over there or is, or is it too well lit? Because, because of the lights, the lighting over there. I know it's all a schema, it's only designed. And then over here, on like a main stair looking, you know, it's very well lit, you know, it's almost like you gotta wear sunglasses, but then over here, it's dark. And I thought maybe it's me, maybe I was looking at something the wrong way. Cause there's lit here, but coming out over here, it's dark.
Right, right. So there's still, it's also a rendering which may show sunlight. You know, sometimes looks brighter in, in some of these pictures than, than artificial light.
It wasn't intentional, it's just that.
No, yeah, I mean, it's going to be well lit and it's going to be lit throughout, not, it's not going to have dark spots.
Cause me being a little twisted, I was wondering if the lights that are already small, are they going to be LED lights?
Definitely LED lights and we'll most likely have pendant fixtures in the cafeteria, which we haven't shown yet, which will light up, a lot of the pendant fixtures are able to light up towards the ceiling as well as down towards the, the people.
I, I'm sorry, I just like.
No, no, that's a good question.
I figured I had something, I must have missed something. And I even looked at this thing last week and then the week before. So there's something, and then over here, I know Dean talked about it, or you guys talked about, about the roofs. Uh, there was a rumor, rumor, a question about the roofs. Some of the roofs being just like that versus like that.
The mechanicals. Because we need the flat roofs for the mechanicals.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Air conditioning, HVAC, air exchanges, all that stuff's on a roof.
Help me, help me, I'm missing, you know.
Well, that's the answer.
What's, what's the, are you working towards roofs like this or roofs like that? Or just a.
Some of it's going to be.
Some of it is, are gable roofs. Some of them are just angled roofs that are not a pitch, you know, that are coming together. We're just looking at different architecturally to allow for a natural light to enter, like the library, for instance.
Is there a cost fact? Um, there, obviously there's a cost factor, I get that. But you know, uh.
We don't know the cost yet, we'll be discussing it tomorrow.
Is it a rubber, a rubber roof versus an aluminum roof or a wooden roof or whatever, you know? What's?
Right, so right now for the angled roofs, they're, they're metal roofs being estimated. And we'll look at that. And then for the flat roofs, those will be rubber roofs. Yes.
All right. Thanks, thank you.
Totally.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Coming out, another night that you've had to come out. Thank you. Okay, let's turn it over to Fallbrook and Francis Drake Presentations.
Yeah, how do you do?
Do you have valleys in Idaho?
I can do it.
Is that like a pothole? Is that a pothole?
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, just to follow up with Craig and the radar, first of all, thank you guys and I appreciate your support, Mr. Mayor as well. You've been very supportive and I'm excited to finally see some of these things coming together. As you say all the time, it's been four or five years at this. So, well, thank you guys for your support. Uh, I'll be very brief as well, because I know you heard a lot about Fallbrook, so we'll try and be very quick.
The right button, sorry. Okay.
There we go.
Yeah, okay.
So just briefly, what we're going to highlight tonight is sort of who we are. Something we've called the Fallbrook Equation, just sort of kind of organically came together. And then some of the highlights that we have had previously this year and things that are coming next year. I did put a new building project, but I think we've covered that pretty well. So there is a slide in there. So here's our Fallbrook Equation. Uh, it's really about the people in our building. Uh, it's about the standards-based instruction, along with that with the, the high-quality instructional materials. And then having our students in front of those high, those engaging and dedicated teachers with, with that standards-based instruction. And what that equals is our outcome. So they're positive, they're, we strive for both academic and social-emotional high growth, high achievement. So when you look at all those quadrants, it's that we want the top right quadrant, regardless of what data we're looking at, which equals high growth, high, high achievement. And that's our staff. So before she, before, well, it's okay, before you do it. So we tried to highlight in this equation, those are, are the people there. So those are engaging, dedicated, passionate, invested teachers that you see below. That's a picture. And then we'll kind of go through some of the other things as well, so. Wasn't you, Steve? There we go. So we believe that teacher effectiveness and capacity is the strongest school-related determinant of student success. Stating the obvious, I think, there. But for that to be applicable, we need to have students in school. So I just kind of took some snapshots of our attendance from last year and kind of compared it both to the state. And then to give it some context, the far right column where it says, it's not very clear, but it says top five in the state, top three in the state. That means that those numbers, 95.7, is, is in the top 5% of attendance rates in the state amongst all schools. And the same is true for the chronic absenteeism. At 4.8, that is, that seems high, right? Sounds high, but it's in the top 3% of schools in the state. And so that's just speaking to those students being in front of our teachers. You've got it? Just a quick snapshot of, of sort of our students that are in our school. We have 670 students. I won't speak too much to it, but there's the percentages of our L students, of our students who receive specialized education, and those students that are on 504s. And then it kind of breaks it down demographically as well. Uh, I know there were some questions about who's in, who are the students sitting in front of us? And that's just sort of kind of a quick snapshot of that. Uh, this is just sort of, so district and school report cards, I think, came out today. That's just sort of a quick snapshot, a different, a different sort of slide of, of how we are doing as a school. Making how many, you know, the percentage of targets that we made. It's a two-year snapshot, so it's a little bit tricky to kind of, we made 88% of our targets this year, maybe 76 last year, so we have 81% total. And then it gives you our overall accountability number relative to state. And that puts us, as, as you guys know, as a school of recognition. And those are the, that was the outcome slide of what we were talking about in our equation. Uh, one of the things, and this is sort of relative to the new, the new building, because we are, part of what drives that building is the educational plan. Actually, that is what drives the building. So one of our programs that's unique to Fallbrook is our Student Support Center, which is a group of maybe 20 to 25 students at this point that receives specialized instruction. And you can see there's, those are sort of the out, bullet points of sort of what those, what the point of that program is, how it is successful, which it is, and how it's staffed, and sort of our belief and philosophy behind it. And then we'll just go into a few things. So we have a, if you guys have been to Fallbrook, we have that top of the ramp area that's a nice space. It's kind of not a wasted space, but, um, so we've kind of taken some, we have a few things, it'll be a few slides. The one on the left is our snowflake student goal. So each student that wants to participate puts their goal for 2025 on a snowflake off of the snowman there. And then in the fall, we had same thing, students write on leaves what they're thankful for. And it could be anything from family to education to, to really anything. We have our Janice Food Drive, we have almost 5,000 pounds of food this year, which Brandon was very excited about. I think it was the most we've ever had. Uh, and then our composting program on the right there is, it's run by our fifth grade students, but every student participates in it. Uh, coming up now, Steve, you'll like this. We have, so this is fairly new, a couple of years we've done this now. It's our March Madness tournament. We, we start at Sweet 16, we don't go all 64. But there are 16 books and sort of students read them and vote on which books. Uh, and that's obviously last year's, it's being done as soon as the snowflakes come down. And then our Coin Warriors for MS, almost $10,000. Uh, that's been ongoing for, I don't know, 10 or 15 years, yeah. Briefly, that's just students bringing in money and different coins or paper money are worth different things. So, and they, they change day to day. I think paper money is always a negative. And then, um, and there's different, it gets kind of crazy. If you want to see that, it's in May this year, late May, and it's, it's controlled chaos for about 20 minutes every morning. But it's awesome. Uh, we have, so we had this back when I was a guidance counselor and you were a teacher. We had a postal service. So it's encouraging, one of our relative weaknesses is our writing. And so we have, um, there's a real, well, it's not real, it's made, but it resembles a real mailbox. And students are writing to each other, to us, to other staff members, obviously to encourage writing, but also building that sense of community. And so that came back this year. Uh, we haven't had it in a few years.
That's run by fourth grade.
That's run by fourth grade, yes. And then we have a, an author visit coming on Valentine's Day. And that is Ivy the Very Determined Dog. And I, I'm being told that that, that's a real dog, obviously, and that they will be here. So that particular dog will be present.
Better be, my daughter's very excited about this.
Yes. We'll have to see, well, yeah. And then just a couple of other things that we, that we want to highlight, and I'll read a couple of them. We have our Falcon phone call, which we want to highlight those students. It's really about effective effort, so it's not about achievement necessarily, although that usually they go hand in hand. Uh, students who come to school with a great attitude, have effort, they persevere, they take feedback. And so I get, I call, we take a grade level every week and I call five families each week and let them know it's, and the kid that we do it on speakerphone, we've added a few things to it, a little spotlight and dance party. But it's, it's, the, the reaction, justifiably so, from the parents is amazing. Cause whenever they see the phone call, like, uh-oh, what happened? And I get to say it's the complete opposite. A couple of things, we have our student of the month. Uh, we've done a Skydome presentation, uh, last, this will be the second year I know. They'll bring in, it's a big inflatable into the gym. In fourth and fifth grade this year, I'm going to have to say, it's kind of like an indoor planetarium. Uh, I never got in there last year, I don't know if you got in, but pretty cool. We do, you know, our United Day, Day of Caring, our Storybook Parade, just a bunch of other things that we do that sort of highlight our, our cultural, culture of community. And then if you want to follow us on Instagram, here we are. Lynn does a good job keeping that active and, and up and going. That was just, I didn't know that they were presenting before us until now, so that, but only one slide. That's sort of just a, you know, the rendering of the outside. That's it. Any questions about any of that?
Sounds wonderful, thank you.
Thank you guys, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, so many familiar faces. I haven't seen you guys in a while. Used to seeing you on the screen from home. So, um, thank you for having us tonight. So let's just share a few highlights from the school. Uh, I'll try to be as good as Jeff in terms of like being succinct and to the point, although I might have included some too much data, but you'll deal with it. All right, so Francis Drake School, and next slides, please. This is some of the topic, oh, the topics we're going to be covering tonight. Again, briefly, looks scary, but we'll go through it. Next slide. So similar to probably other schools, kind of hard to see. And I even got notes over here in case I needed my notes, but I didn't bring my glasses. So that's that. But you know, I wasn't going to say much about that. That's just the makeup of the school. Give you a second to, just, oh, I can see this one.
Yeah.
How does the superintendent, how does that compare to low income or lower moderate income compared to the other schools? Is it pretty balanced though, or?
No, this is, this would be higher than some of our.
Okay, I mean, that's, it's the neighborhood and part of.
Yep.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yep. And same as the other schools, this is consistent across the district, but I figure, bring it up in case someone was wondering. We have our. bring it up in case someone was wondering. We have our high quality instructional materials, different curriculums that we use for ELA, math and science. I'll highlight the one in the middle, which is our math program. We're in our second year of implementation. Us with any program brings these challenges of, you know, just getting to another program and getting the teachers receiving PD, which they are. And, you know, second year implementation across the district, hoping to see better and better, the more, you know, we get used to this sort of new approach, which is pretty interesting. Love, that's one of my favorite things to go. Superintendent has been at the school a few times and going into the classrooms, see the math going on and, you know, challenging students and seeing how curious. And the things that they come up with, when, you know, you ask the simple question, what do you notice? What do you wonder when you're shown a graphic of sorts or a problem? It's just fascinating to see those little minds coming up with all kinds of answers. So those are our three main programs. And I just wanted to put it there for a visual. Next. Quickly, a few things that have been going on, most recently anyway. So thank you to whomever was behind the funding for our gym, brand new hoops. I don't think they have been replacing the school guy belt. So that's, it's such a, gives a nice little finished touch to it. A lot of kids love soccer, so we have, we have been working on that. It's there, not exactly where I want to see it, but it's, it's functional. The students are having fun with that. As you all probably know, the portables are there, not, not in use yet, but they, they looks like they're done. So that's kind of exciting moving forward. Yeah. So that's, and we, little by little, every year, we add a piece to a playground. Most of you drive by Biscuit Avenue, and you're like, oh, you have brand new playground in the front. The only issue with that is that you can only bring one class at a time there, because, you know, it can hold the capacity for, for a whole grade level. So we do use the back playground for the most part. And so occasionally, small, smaller groups will go and use the front, but not exactly something we have, we use for recess. Next. This is where it gets a little overwhelming, so I really don't got to get too, too much into it. But I put it there in case anyone wants to take it home and read it at night before you go to bed. But what I, what I included there, it's rather interesting, just because I gave you the MCAS annual comparison for ELA, math and science. And it's by grade, by school, by district, by state. Again, I can't even see it from here. So, but it's there. It's one, one report that is available to really anyone. It's public information. And for your pleasure, if anyone has any question, let me know. But you have from two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-four of data going on. And the next one is math. And then the next slide will be science. I also included a little bit of one other data point, which is our I-ready data. This is the ELA portion, or the reading portion of it, for the fall and the winter. And just with the visual, you see what we studied in the fall. This is as, as a whole, as a school, not by grade, just as a school, as a total school. The, the goal is obviously increase the green, decrease the red. And you can see in reading how that is sort of working out. Again, you don't want to see any red, but we're moving in the right direction. So some initiatives and strategies we have going on this year, it seems to be working. We need to keep at it. Next. And then same thing for math. School Improvement Plan is a lot more than this, but I figure I highlight a couple of the goals. And the first one, I'll read it. Francis Drake School aims to create a more cohesive and meaningful learning experience for students, focusing on instruction that drives towards the unit or text essential questions and topics rather than discrete skills across all content areas. Basically, all that is, is that is aiming at pushing towards the classroom discourse. And we are not focusing on just memorizing things. But, you know, every unit has essential questions, which basically drives each lesson of each unit. And that's what, you know, we keep our focus on throughout each and other units at different grade levels. Number two is more about the engagement piece for students to be able, with a focus on having students to ask high level questions and open and deal with open ended questions, and that aiming at enhancing their understanding and defending their position with, with details, facts from the text, if, if it is ELA, or so just aiming at the higher thinking part of it. Social emotional learning goal, just to grow up to their full potential, engage in their social emotional abilities, and experiencing a strong sense of belonging. That sense of belonging is huge. If students don't feel that they are accepted for who they are, regardless of their origin, setbacks, whatever, they got to feel accepted. Once, once they feel that they belong to that unit, they are ready to learn. And so that's has been a major focus for us. And there's a variety of things that we do to support that. One of our favorite ones is our daily check-ins, in which we identify students who perhaps we feel that could use a grownup as a daily check-in. And so each one of us sort of adopts a student in which we're checking with them five minutes every day, you know? And hey, how's it going? How did it go last night? How was your weekend? What are you planning? Get to know them as, as individuals, not just as students. And it'll be interesting, it's interesting to see how much they open up and how they just look forward to those few minutes with an adult, their adult. That's one of the, one of the strategies that we use for that. And community goal, as usual, you know, we, actually tomorrow, tomorrow night, we have our next meeting for, where our PTO is a key, key part of, of keeping the community engaged. We are planning our March, what's the name? March No-Soul Madness event. So that's going to be taking place in March. So we titled it that. And it's just all about the, the students and the families to bring them in and spend some time together and open, open doors. Next. And Mrs. Hess thought she would escape tonight and not say a word. But I said, you know what? This is, Mrs. Hess is the last year with us. So she has a couple of things that she'd like to, like to evolve.
Sure. So I'm very proud to say that this is our thirteenth year in responsive classroom. I believe I recognize you. But this is a big part of our day. Every morning, we have a morning meeting in the classroom, and they go through four different areas, greeting, sharing, group activity, morning message. And it really sets the stage for the day. A lot of times that greeting is just stating your name, and maybe you have to answer the morning question, what do you like on your pizza? And it just kind of bonds the children. It builds a community within the classroom. Sharing can be an eye opener. You might bring up a subject that maybe is a hot topic at recess, and how would you handle it? So that it's just great to see the communication amongst all the children and the problem solving that they are able to do. Group activity, they might play a game, something that strengthens their friendships. Morning message is just a quick message about the day. Along with morning, morning meeting, prior to that, we have breakfast in the classroom. Again, it's not going to breakfast in the cafeteria and eating as fast as you can so you can get up to the classroom. It's actually sitting in your classroom in small groups and, and having quiet conversation, which is all what we do when we go to Starbucks and hang out with, with our families. So I, I think it's really fostering that growth for later on and how to communicate with others. And it really, it does set the bar for the day. It's a really fun time to, to walk around. It's quiet. There's that, that buzz going on. So I, I do like that sense of community it's built. Next. And this is just some of the attendance initiatives that we have at Francis Drake. We have our weekly attendance trophy. So every Friday, I go to every lunch. And we have been following and taking down data as to, as to the attendance for each classroom in each grade. And every Friday, I give out a trophy. It is amazing how excited they are. I'm not giving them prizes. They're not getting extra recess. It's a trophy that they get to keep for a week. And the reason why we like it is that it's, it's a trophy. And they feel that sense of ownership. They did it. But we have never had an issue where someone points a finger and says, it's your fault, you know, that we didn't get the trophy. They do their silent cheer. And they, they wait to next, to the next week, because next week it starts again. So it's never just a one and done. Breakfast in the classroom, like I mentioned, these are some of our kindergartners. They're just having a nice morning, and they learn also to pick up after themselves. We're not cleaning up after them. Dragon tickets are something that we utilize come December. So we have children for, for right now, they're focusing on, you know, being respectful, kind, responsible, hardworking, friendly and safe. They can get those from teachers, from specialists, from even our, our duties, anybody, custodial staff. And they're really, really, really proud of it. They come down at the end of the day, they put them in, in the bins for their grade level. And every Friday, again, I'm very busy on Fridays. I, I pick a name from every grade, and we call them down, and they just get to pick their pencils and bracelets and just something little. But we always ask them, what'd you do to get this? And they are able to kind of respond and tell us what happened. Also, chronic absenteeism letters and flyers do go out occasionally, depending on how the attendance looks. With our letters, we do have a really friendly kind of a pamphlet that talks to parents about, you know, the law, the benefits of being at school all the time, how ahead your own child can be just for being there and participating in school. Next slide. These are some of our events. This was our fundraiser, our fun run. I'm usually donned in our dragon for this. And I was told several times, I was really rocking the, the headband that day. We are, we hit our goal of, I think it was, I'm not quite sure the amount, but we've hit it, we hit a lot of goals as we, as we did this fundraiser. So on Friday, our two top sellers in front of the entire school get to pie us. Eve volunteered this. You notice? No, I gotta, I gotta get, right, I have to get the shower curtain, you know, cap and all that. So, and then if you want to talk about our, we have spaghetti night coming up, we have Dining for Education, Dining Out, Literacy Night, Field Day.
March No-Soul Madness.
March No-Soul Madness. And then in the right hand corner is one of our favorites, is our multi, what would you?
International.
International night, where you get to dine on foods around the world. And it's my, hey, it's the best. It's the best. So.
Sal's favorite.
Yeah.
He's not supposed to have one.
Come next time.
He gets there at the very beginning.
He pushes the kids out of the way, don't.
Gone.
Yep. I know how it goes.
I know, I know. I try. I try. All right. Questions?
I got a question.
Yes.
This question for, for Jeff and Lynn too, is I know you mentioned I am math. Have you had any input from teachers about how they're feeling about it and that curriculum? And I'm not, I'm not asking you to give your own opinion, but I just want to hear kind of what the sentiment is from teachers at the elementary level right now.
Yeah, I think like any new curriculum, that it's still going to be, there's going to be people who were like, embrace it right away. And like, oh, my God, this is amazing. I think that one thing to say, and probably, excuse me, Lauren could speak to that. The process that we went through it is kind of what I fall back into when I have those conversations, because the teachers were driving that process along with district administrators, in, in that they had a say as to what we picked. Again, some people get to it more, some people are in the process of getting there. I feel this, if you would have asked me these questions last year, I would have been like, ah, it's just a lot.
Pulling your hair out.
Pulling my hair out. This year seems like, God, not a day compared to last year. So everyone is at a different place. And I think overall, once everybody gets there, we're going to be in a really good place. It's, it's a, it's a challenging curriculum, and but it's very interesting. And so, again, you can ask me, you can ask teacher that question, and someone will tell you what I just said. Somebody else might tell you something else. And it is what it is through the school. So we are trying to stay with the, let's use it with fidelity. If you're not what you want to be yet in terms of how comfortable you feel delivering the curriculum, we'll get there. What do you need? Let's support you. Let's, we have our curriculum specialists that come and work with teachers on a daily. So it's, to me, it's more about providing teachers with the support they need to feel confident about the product.
What about you guys? No, 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 never. Yeah, exactly.
So I heard a lot of what Andre said. I would just say, I know, and I'm just going to be candid. I know some of our special education students struggle with it. It's sort of a paradigm shift from the I do, you do, we do type thing that we used to do, I guess. And it's really, really centered on student thinking, which is amazing. But I think it's just really, it's been a difficult shift. Not difficult. It's been a check. Yeah, it's just because it's a lot of, we, we want the students doing all of thinking, all the, all the, all the work. And sometimes teachers have a little bit of trouble letting that go a little bit. So I, I think it's been, I mean, we were part of the process of that, and we, we were, it's for it. So.
Yeah.
You know, I think like Andre said, though, I do believe, depending on who you ask, different teachers would have different answers.
Okay.
Other questions? Yes.
Is the curriculum online based? Or is it like, you know, just administered fully through the teachers?
Say that again. I'm sorry.
Is this like an online based curriculum? Or is it administered fully through the teachers?
The teacher, yeah, there's online component, but it's all teacher. It's really student-led.
Yeah. So just speaking for a lot of the students at the high school, I do always want to, I guess, caution with a lot of curriculum that includes an online component. And that's not to say we shouldn't utilize the technology that we have access to nowadays. I think is incredible and is a really good tool. We need to have a balance, especially because at home, kids have like unfettered access to the internet. And I was talking with a lot about, talking to a lot of teachers, a lot of students about this recently. And a lot of us have felt very fatigued from online curriculum. And we have online curriculum, you know, on the high school level as well. And students are not the biggest fans of it. So I'm not saying, you know, it's bad. Obviously, I haven't seen this curriculum myself. I just always like to add that caveat, just speaking from the perspective of a student.
Hey, other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Head for the doors before we think of something else. Just kidding. Okay, next would be our fiscal year 2026 budget timeline process. Hardly able to comprehend the fact that we're talking about 2026.
Sure. What?
Yeah.
I'll just preface it before. We, we did meet in subcommittee and talk through it. It aligns very closely with what we did last year. And it was already in kind of our calendar, existing school committee calendar. So Melanie, go ahead.
No, you're, you're absolutely right on. It's similar to the process that we had for last year. I think we talked a little bit about how we've done a couple of things different this year in inviting the principals in and having meetings with cabinet. And you could see that those meetings happened January 27th and today, February 3rd, which has been a great addition with the new superintendent to get feedback and hear the, hear from each principal individually. Other than that, you can see, we've already gotten the Governor's House One proposed, which is great for preliminary numbers, and it's nice to look at, but it is by no means our set in stone number. So we'll wait to see what the Senate says and then have them fight it out. But yeah, so this is just a timeline, so that you guys know where we're at with the process. And we'll discuss more when we can have meetings for finance that are maybe longer than fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
But yeah, we'll keep everybody in the loop process. And if, of course, if you guys have any questions, let me know. We just need to vote it in as a full committee.
Is that what we're doing today, voting?
Yes.
Get a motion to approve the budget calendar, fiscal 26.
The mic, sir.
Thought I was.
Can't hear you. Speak a little.
I did.
Yeah. Okay. Did everybody hear? All right.
All those.
There he goes.
Thank you. All right. The school committee protocol.
Yes. I had, I had asked the mayor to put that on, which is something that we should do every, you know, first meet, well.
do every, you know, first meet, well, first major meeting, once elections and people get sworn in for us to just review that. And I guess really what I wanted to just sort of highlight is that, you know, it's really important that we are respectful to each other, that, you know, we are all not going to agree all the time with each other, but it's important that, you know, that also gives us great dialogue and exposes people to different thoughts and ideas that, you know, we should not be disrespectful or have any repercussions if people are not agreeing with you. It's really important for folks to speak as one voice and our voices as a school committee, whether we agree on the final vote or not, it's important that we are supporting the decisions as made as a whole because we are the school committee, not necessarily individuals. And, you know, things need to be brought through the chair if there's any issues or concerns. You know, we don't want to give surprises to the superintendent. We do want to refer if any constituents express certain concerns or whatever, that we bring that to the superintendent and for the staff to be able to resolve that issue. We're sort of the intermediary between our constituents and the superintendent. So we just wanted to refresh everybody's mind and we should be doing that, you know, annually anyways, to review our protocols so that we are all on the same page and speaking the same voice. I don't know if anybody else had any other thoughts or comments, but just wanted to make sure we had it to review.
Okay. Thank you. We'll take up the approval of the minutes for December 2nd and January 6th.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of December 2nd and the minutes of January 6th.
All right, it's a second. All right, it's a second. Sandy, is there any errors, omissions, anything that we missed? If not, all in favor? Those opposed? Okay.
No, I'm gonna abstain from the January 6th.
We didn't get any postcards or anything. I waited, I checked my mail. Okay, now we'll move on to subcommittee reports, policy subcommittee.
So we met earlier today and we had voted to approve the additions to the handbook that were basically to align ourselves with the expectations from DESI. So we did vote on that. And we will need to vote on that as a full committee. And then we did have the athletic director and some students come talk to us about where the athletic advisory board stands on the issue of our policy and student athletes. We heard from a couple of students, obviously, we heard some from some people during our open forum. We have agreed on some changes to our policy. And we voted on that in the subcommittee, but we will not bring that forward for first reading until we actually get to review it and have it, you know, in writing before us as well. So that will hopefully be, we will have another subcommittee meeting, which we will figure out and let folks know. But we hopefully will be ready to go at our next meeting to do the first reading of it. And any other comments? Because Ren, I know you wanted to speak earlier on the, on some topic from the policy. This would be the time to do it if you wanted to. You don't have to.
Yeah, no, I have definitely talked to a lot of students just at the school, athletes and whatnot regarding the policy. And I received a lot of different opinions. I have one in writing if the committee would like to hear it.
Is it one person's or a conglomerate?
It's a conglomerate, came largely from the softball team.
Well, is it representative? I mean, is it somebody that represents the sport versus just somebody's speaking for it? You know what I'm saying? I don't want to get calls tomorrow where somebody says, I, it wasn't speaking for me. So, I mean, if you want to make copies and get them to us, that's even better.
Okay.
That's okay.
Yeah, I can do that because it's quite lengthy. I wouldn't want to spring it on you. And there's definitely been a lot of discussion. I've heard varying opinions from a lot of different students. There have been some who completely disagree with it, but I've heard others who have been in situations where they've played against like a male athlete where they didn't necessarily feel comfortable. On the other hand, I've heard anecdotes of students who were that student who was of the opposite sex on a team who didn't, who like, you know, they were only able to play on that team because we had to ensure them that's right. So I think, you know, it's just important to highlight that there is a lot of mixed opinions on this.
Thank you.
Very diplomatic of you. But that's the truth. I think we've all discussed this with a lot of people.
Yep.
Everyone has an opinion about it. Our, our job is to make sure that we gather all of those opinions, all the information and do what's best, right? Because that's our, that's our charge is cooking the madness. Okay, questions at all? All right, so still another meeting?
Yes.
And then it comes back to the full bar?
Yes.
Yes, we can vote on that. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the changes in the handbook.
All right, any questions on that? If not, all in favor? Those opposed? Okay, now we're gonna move on to finance updates. I haven't spent any money in a long time, Greg.
We got a lot to read off, so bear with me. This is what happens when we skip a few things.
Let's first say that you got voted back in as the chair, so that's good.
I don't know why.
That huge stipend he was getting.
Yes.
A percentage based on the.
The number of warrants I read, so keep them coming. Keep them coming. I don't know, I don't know. All right. So we start with the reading of the warrants? Good?
Yes.
All right. Warrant number 20, $3,182,544.29. Warrant 21, $590,851.95. Warrant 22, $2,996,180.92. Warrant 23, $138,966.83. Warrant 24, $2,572,102.00. Warrant 25, $1,198,217.82. Warrant 26, $2,786,372.35. Warrant 27, $553,857.59. Warrant 28, $6,586,648.41. Warrant 29, $838,977.92. And warrant 30, $2,874,826.48. That's the end of.
General fund.
General funds.
Right?
Might be grants revolving too.
Let's vote on that. All right?
Need a breath, so let's vote.
Let's vote. Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Those opposed? Thank you.
All right, grants revolving. Warrant 20, $235,014.75. Warrant 21, $1,827,230.20. Warrant 22, $256,886.95. Warrant 23, $76,619.68. Warrant 24, $611,813.13. Warrant 25, $732,153.47. Warrant 26, $272,762.89. Warrant 27, $153,497.51. Warrant 28, $201,60.22. Warrant 29, $522,88.93. And warrant 30, $379,033.98.
Hey, is that the motion? Yeah, you can make the motions to.
I make a motion to accept grants revolving warrants.
Second by Jennifer? All right? All in favor? Those opposed? And just so, in case somebody's in the audience that thinks we're spending like crazy, we haven't had.
We are, but.
We haven't had a, we haven't had a meeting in a while. We haven't had a meeting in a while, so we're.
Catching up.
Catching up.
You got some transfers?
Yes.
All right, so the first one, request the following transfer to the general fund. It's table, table one.
Do you like me to read it?
You want me to read them off or?
This is a, it's a total transfer request from salaries to expenses of 1.1 million for that table one.
Okay.
Why are you running such a high balance halfway?
Yeah, we talked about it in, in finance. It's, one of the things that happened is when we did the modular classrooms, we had budgeted in the grant, the ESSR grant, about a little over $3 million. It came in much lower than that. And so what we were allowed to do, instead of giving the money back to the state, we were allowed to take that, pay some of our current salaries and not lose the money. So.
All right, good.
I think we have to vote on these things separately.
Yes.
So I, I make a motion to accept the following transfer to the general fund, table one.
A second.
Any questions? If not, all in favor? Those opposed? Go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion to request the following transfer to the general fund from table two. Melanie, if you want to.
Sure, that one is a transfer within the salary budget of $32,000. It's basically we're taking funding from the department head, non-supervisory into business and finance to cover a secretarial position that went from a half time to a full time.
Okay. Motion? Motion by Melissa, do we have a second? Josh, all in favor? Those opposed? Thank you.
And the table two A is another salary transfer within the salary budget. We are moving $57,000 from the classroom teacher line into the medical health services line for the nurses that we hired that were above budget.
Okay, motion? Sandy and Ron for a second, all in favor? Those opposed? Thank you.
And then just the, the next transfer report is just informational. They don't need a vote, they are within the same DESI code, but it's over $10,000, so I do have to let you know that they were made. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Please let me know.
Very efficient.
Thank you.
All right, action items, acceptance of a donation by Home Depot, we did 400 bird house kits. We have a motion to accept the donation? In a second?
Second.
There you go. Two field trips. Where are we going?
Yeah.
Do we want to just say?
Motion is second.
Right, but you didn't say all those in favor, so I just want to make sure it's recorded.
I was excited about the field trip. I never got to.
Aren't we all? I mean, like, isn't that what's the most important thing?
I never got to go on the field trip, Chris.
Come on.
He took us to sex.
Stratton? Wait a minute. Hold on. When are they going to Stratton? Can I, can I go? Oh, are they going skiing?
Old news. Where's the field trips? Verlano?
Stratton?
Orlando or two.
One is to Stratton, Vermont, and the other one is Orlando.
Josh and I want to chaperone.
When's the, when's the Orlando one?
The 15th and 16th, yeah.
March 15th and 16th. March 15th and 16th.
Okay, do I have a motion in a second?
I make a motion.
And I need a second. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Thank you, now we'll go on to, I skipped over surplus equipment, you saw old books and trucks and things that Aunt takes and nobody wants. Do we have a motion to declare those surplus?
Sandy?
Sandy does. Do we second by Josh, all in favor? Thank you. Redundant warrants and transfers, memorandum of understanding for the new fields behind the high school. This project, I have to say, it took on a life of its own that is almost, I'm not feeling, I could just tell you, didn't expect it to go on this long, but it took our, and for some good reasons. I mean, when they built the school in 63, whatever year it was, it didn't, it didn't have, I just assumed it was voice activated. It didn't have fields, although it was part of the project, but they never built them. I think you all remember that. So in the overall plan at Doyle was to do all those renovations to Doyle and to take the track in another field up here at the high school for a number of reasons, one of which is just the parking lot shouldn't be the place where we have gym and we shouldn't, you know, I mean, that field up there is just a hazard, just to walk through, let alone to try to have any kind of physical activities there. So we decided to, and the other thing is that where the track was, you know, we're shooting javelins and people are walking within 25 feet. Didn't make any sense, the plan was to take it up here. The athletic department in the school tried to do more with it. We were trying to do more with the project and it just turned out that the price tag was just more than we had bonded and than we had for, that we hadn't enough funding for, so we scaled it back. But in the meantime, we had a number of meetings with the neighbors. They were concerned that it didn't turn in. As I said, there were, there was a golf course there before. And, and then, then it got developed as housing. Now we have neighbors, obviously they're concerned. So we had come up with a number of meetings we had and we had come up with this memorandum of understanding here. I think some concerns were that this is gonna be like Doyle Field, we're gonna start renting it out and, you know, those sorts of things. And that was never the case. So we can approve this tonight if you don't have any issues with it, or we can bring it back for a second time.
Been going on for too long, let's do this.
Yeah.
Let's vote.
Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding.
Okay, so, okay. Oh, everybody seconds, it's a wonderful thing. All in favor? Those opposed? Okay, that'll give us the authority for the superintendent and I to sign off and new rule of business. I just, one thing I just want to alert you to is the world of energy has gotten very complicated. If you've, if you've tried to understand your electric bill or your gas bill and then tried to pick a third party, what's the third party is, and did I get my renewal in on time? What happens if I don't? So we put in for a grant to help us to understand that. And the grant is for the general public. It's a part-time job, it's community sharing, somebody just help you out. I've done it a million times with people, but I'm not always sure I'm giving people the right advice. I can send you to the MassSave, you know, exchange site, I can tell you what I have, but I'm not the broker. You know, I don't want to get in trouble by being the broker and telling somebody to sign up for Constellation when they should have signed up for something else. And then they come back on the city and say, you know, the mayor gave me bad advice. So anyway, we got that grant, so we want to do a similar thing for the school department. So the superintendent and I would share somebody, a full-time person that would help us to, and, and it's, I mean, I can't tell you how many times people have come into my office with ladders and said, we gotta change the light bulbs. I'm like, didn't you just do this? And they're like, yeah, well, we got a grant, we're gonna change light bulbs again. And so it gets, the, the whole thing, sustainability, do we, is solar just a symbolic thing? Is it really save us money? What's the return on it? Do we buy the system? Do we rent the system? Everybody here knows what I mean, right? It's, it gets extremely confusing. So this, this person that the superintendent and I would apply for a grant through would actually give us an opportunity to hire somebody to help us out with all of these things, all the energy needs of the city and the school, department collective. I mean, we've saved a lot of money over time. We've saved hundreds of thousands of dollars over time, but it can get confusing and they're constantly changing things. And yeah, so that's the deal on it, just just an FYI. And anything else on the know or all business? Yes, Melissa?
Just a quick thanks from me that we obviously experienced the loss of a student since our last meeting. And I just wanted to send my thanks and appreciation to the staff that I saw that was supporting and helping to lead our kids through a difficult situation for the last few weeks. Thank you.
Anyone else? New rule of business? Yes, Josh?
I have two things. Last Friday, I attended Zoom meeting put on by Attorney General's Office for Know Your Student Rights. I think it was in response to some of the schools making public statements about protecting student information against any sort of law enforcement inquiries and things of that nature. It was pretty extensive and there were lots of warnings to run everything through attorneys. So I'm trying to get a copy of the Zoom meeting. Can't remember if they said it was being recorded or not, but I'm hopeful, hopefully that it was so that we can review it, everybody can have access to it to see what was, it Everybody can have access to it to see what was, it was a, so a lot of information I wasn't able to capture at all. I've also asked them for any sort of guidance that they were reading from to be distributed to us that we can review and have our attorneys review it as well. The data I haven't received it.
Okay.
Well, Rob, do you want to add to that in the rest day?
Go ahead.
So we have received some information from the Department of Ed and from the Mass Attorney General's Office. And we have been having our student attorney's office review the information and provide us with guidance, and we will continue to do that. We have also updated our staff around FERPA, which is, you know, our student privacy rights guidance that we've had for years. And so we've just, you know, revisited that with our staff so that everybody knows what the guid- guidance is around FERPA. Lorraine Sapola is also going to be our point person at central office. So if schools have any questions about student privacy information and, and rules, they can reach out to Lorraine and Lorraine will be in direct contact with our student attorney's office so that we get the right legal guidance for handling any kinds of situations that might occur around student privacy.
Is that the Zoom meeting they had Thursday?
Friday.
Right, Friday.
And then Thursday, Friday, we tied guys like you. It's all one day, you know, Monday.
It's just that, you know, it's, when they were talking, you could tell, you could tell that they all had a strained look on their faces because regardless of how they want to change things, they know there's gonna be things that are gonna get changed without them knowing. Then all of a sudden, they have to come back to figure out what to do. And it's, it's worse than walking on eggs. I really believe because you really don't know what is going to happen, you know?
Well, let me say this, Ron, right? I mean, I really, really hope that there is no federal, state, local agency that's gonna start coming into the schools and like dragging kids out of, you know, guests or, or employees or whatever. I mean, I, I mean, that would be like, I mean, if they, exactly, I mean, I, but the thing that concerns me, and I heard from a whole lot of people, is all this conversation is scaring kids. They're getting scared.
And parents, and parents, and staff.
And
Scaring a kid and scaring the parents as well.
I know they're trying to get the bad guys off the street. I think everybody in every neighborhood is saying, hey, listen, we can get some bad guys off the street and, you know, you gotta, you know, they're federal law enforcement agency, they're sworn, they're police officers, law enforcement, they're gonna do, they're instructed by whoever, go do your job, fine. But I don't want, at, at this time, there's nothing that leads me to believe that suddenly we're gonna come in and start taking kids out of the schools. Why would we? There, if you're gonna apprehend somebody, you don't have to come into the schools where the cameras and the phones and everything isn't going, but and nobody has told me otherwise. Yes.
So speaking from my own concern, I, I don't believe they're gonna be coming in and with warrants for children in our schools. But my concern is, in where I'd like to see more community connection, because it's happened in the past, is that factories get raided or businesses get raided and children come home and there's no one there for them. And that's my concern. So while we have no control over what happens outside the home, I would like to see some interaction, whether it's with the Spanish American Center or some other agencies about where parents can turn to if they're afraid of what may happen during the day.
Good point. We're not gonna change on the call.
Everything, you know, you can find online, everything is online, where everybody is, where they've been. Everything is public information. They list it like, every day, I think they update the site. But yeah, I mean, nobody wants, they are, how do I say this? They are, they have protocols in place and they're following them. They're, they're not sort of ragtag. That's been my experience lately, is they're very sort of organized as to what they do. And I don't know whether that means before they pick somebody up, they already gather that intelligence or send somebody, a, a social service agency with them. I know there are a number of people that come with them. So is that part of it? I'm not sure. But that's a good question and, and how do they? That's a question we can ask is the city is, so how do you, you know, you just come and pick people up and leave? And then what about kids and whether or not they bring social workers or somebody behind them? Whether they already know that they have kids and that's part of the system.
And is that something a parent can be coordinating, you know, at the time?
Right.
If, if they feel brave enough to.
But I, I, I just don't want to, I, remember the old days of the air raid, you know, the, man, it
I had air raid drills.
Could go off and they're gonna run downstairs and civil, we still get the civil defense plaques there at City Hall, the fallout shelter. And every time I heard a plane going, and Devon's had planes every five seconds, you know, you start to think, is this the one? You know, and it's got enough to be afraid of today and
That's why I think it's important to have the advice.
Yes, you are a hundred percent right.
Take a step back, slow down, make sure what we're hearing is right and have
Not throw messy, but they, they released something and then revised it like 12 hours later, you know, it was just
Yeah.
It's, it's hard to, you really, you really gotta follow just like legal advice, follow lawyers directly.
Right.
Know your district, know your, you know.
But they have many more lawyers than we do.
It's scary. I mean, nobody wants to make the wrong, nobody wants to make headlines.
No, no. And, and, I mean, they have also said, look, if you're hiding somebody, that's
Oh, yeah.
Sort of known, we, we maybe even take picking you up as well. And that's, you know, if you're hiding these people, we will go wherever we have to get them kind of thing if they're, they're bad enough. So I think the first week was, everyone was in a, in a panic and, and so, I mean, I, I mean, us as a city would really try to persuade them not to go take kids, parents, and then leave the kids unsupervised, come into the schools. I mean, we would really do our best to try to, you know, talk some sense. But I, I haven't seen that happen or haven't heard that that's gonna be their plan, that we know, you know, different, anything different. But right now, it's picking up some really bad guys on the streets that really need to be taken off the street.
They stick to that.
And
Someone even suggested to me that, I don't know where we're going to get them, but to put a police officer at every bus stop. I feel like we need the number of buses that we have.
Yeah, that's
There's a lot of, there's a lot of misleading information there.
Right. Right, another school system did something, you know, put out some information that was very scary. So I think the important thing for us is to assure people that our child, children's safety and welfare is paramount. And as a district and as a community, we're gonna do everything we can within the law to keep everybody safe and, and secure. And there are resources in the community and folks can reach out.
Superintendent and I said the exact same thing. It's, we have, we have to follow the law and whatever the law is, we have to follow it. But at the same time.
The thing of it is, Dean, and this is where I have the heretic written on my forehead. Yes, we followed the law. But anyone who's ever read or heard or read Henry David, Henry David Thoreau, when do you have to engage in civil disobedience?
Well, we're not
He never worked a day in his life, that, that I know.
Right, we're not
We're not getting arrested. Make fun of what he said.
Well, I'm sure he paid taxes.
I'm, I'm asking you, I'm not, I'm asking you. Because everyone here at this table and everyone out there too has to wonder, when are we supposed to engage in civil disobedience?
When, when things don't make any sense. I, I would be the first one, Ron. If they came into town and said, we're gonna run a bunch of schools, I'd be the first one there to say, have you lost your minds? No, we're not gonna do that. That's, that's just not gonna happen. There's no, it's not necessary. And it would be really bad for them as an agency, whereas I think, you know, people in other cities, other police officers I know and law enforcement say they're happy. They're in cities where crime is, neighborhoods where they work is out of control and they're happy they're taking these people out. I, I would really have a strong conversation with them about, is this necessary? Does this make any sense? Is this, what benefit is this gonna be to anybody, including your own agency? So that's where Henry Thoreau comes in is, you know, common sense.
I did have one more thing, sorry.
Yeah, no.
Really quickly, just a request, the district calendar, I was wondering if we could add the early release days to that. The district calendar that you can download from the website, because I have, I have my phone synced with it and those don't appear. And some of the club events, like the Black Heritage Gala, don't appear on it. A lot of the school events do. So I'm wondering if it's maybe the, the vibes to the clubs might be able to forward it to somebody to get those added.
All right, anything else? If not, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Rest of you can sit here. So they turned us into food. You see, if long enough, they'll bring food.